Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 10th. This is a Fairmont Area School Board meeting. The roll call this evening is Danielle Schutzen and Rufus Rodriguez are absent at the present time but may be showing up after their appointments, so we'll see what happens. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Rufus is here, so we can mark him as present. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting, which was on October 27th, 2015?
I have, and I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. Motion by Dan, second by Nicole, to approve the October 27th, 2015 school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then on the agenda this evening, if you look under Superintendent's Report and Calendar, there's an A and B. Those are really celebrations and school community reports, so we're just going to move them up. They're just in the wrong section, so. Anything else that needs to be changed on the agenda? Julie will cover that. Any other additions, corrections, changes?
I move to approve the school board meeting agenda for Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, as amended.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. A motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the November 10th, 2015 school board meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So then we will move to the celebration and school and community reports, and the first one is Community Education and Recreation Day proclamation, which I will read, and then Ronnie Dower will be here to talk to us about that. So, "Whereas Fairmont Community Education and Recreation is celebrating 44 years of providing lifelong learning and leisure opportunities for all ages to our area, whereas Fairmont CER is an active and valuable entity of the early learner through adult educational offerings in Fairmont area schools, enhancing the E-12 services of the district and providing additional E-through-adult opportunities to the community. Whereas Fairmont CER fosters partnerships and collaborations with other organizations and agencies to promote positive collective impact of school and community resources for the betterment of all citizens. And whereas Fairmont CER actively seeks new ways to be involved in achieving the goals of the whole communities, collaborating for the greater good. Whereas the Fairmont CER Citizens Advisory Council is representative of the area populations and encourages all citizens, young and old, to be lifelong learners and actively engaged in the community. Whereas Fairmont CER enhances the quality of life for our school and community and promotes healthy, purposeful lifestyles for all ages. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Diane Gerhart, President of the Fairmont Area Schools' Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 12th, 2015, as Community Education and Recreation Day in Fairmont Area School District 2752, and call upon all citizens to recognize and participate in this special observance by supporting Fairmont Community Education and Recreation as a provider of lifelong learning and leisure opportunities for all ages." So, November 12th, which is next Thursday. So Ronnie, want to talk to us about what special events and things that are happening at CER?
Thank you very much. It's been a great 44 years for Community Ed in Fairmont, I believe. On Thursday, I want to invite you and the public to our open house in honor of Community Education and Recreation Day. We will have coffee and cookies in our office from 9:00 to 4:00 that day. Some of the other things that are happening are we have our Community Education Advisory Council meeting at noon. We have a fantastic 15-member Citizens Advisory Council, representative of a lot of community volunteers and city, school, county, chamber, convention and visitors bureau, business, retired populations, young adults, a very dedicated group, and they're very strong advocates for Community Ed in our group. Some of you have already been on that group or else, if you haven't, please feel free to join us. Two of our Advisory Council members actually started a program with the help of a lot of other community volunteers to develop the newcomers and neighbors program. And we do not have a welcome wagon anymore in Fairmont, and so they saw this as a need in our community, and they decided to hold it on the fifth Thursday, the months, all the months that have five Thursdays. It'll be on the fifth Thursday, and they've done some really neat types of programs this past year. They've done boat rides at the yacht club one night. I think Joe was there to join us. And they had a historical stroll through downtown last winter, and we've also had roller skating at the elementary school. They're just a few of the ways they creatively are trying to welcome and network with other people in our community, so that's been a fun thing to see them do. I really believe that we are an active and valuable entity for early learning through adult educational offerings in our schools. We play a significant and a positive role, enhancing the lifestyles of those in our district and our community, and we provide a lot of enriching E-through-adult opportunities that complement what the schools do. So I believe we are truly committed to providing lifelong learning and leisure opportunities for all ages. Someone this morning came into my office and they said, "Community education is really a model. We should be used as a model in our community more for collaboration and the cooperation that we work with to use resources more efficiently for the betterment of our whole community." I thought, "What a great compliment to have. I appreciate it, hearing that." In this day and age, building networks and partnerships paves the way for a greater trust among our government and business entities to accomplish the very best for all of our citizens, young and old. I think I've been very fortunate to work with an amazing team in our office and an amazing group of advocates who understand this and who care about the youth and the adults, all ages, making sure that they're giving them the best service and continuing opportunities to learn and grow into the leaders for our community. I've been very blessed to say that I've enjoyed coming to work in Community Ed every day that I have worked. I've been very lucky, and it's because of the basic premise of Community Ed. And I get to meet so many neat people, and I have the opportunity to work with and learn every day because of it, and I hope the rest of you do, too. I passed out a brief Community Ed in a nutshell synopsis that you have in your hands, and I'll highlight a couple of things on that. Strengthening the community through collaboration and building new partnerships to grow our school and the community in the best ways possible has become very important to our community, to the Fairmont CER and the types of things that are happening here. Due to the, for instance, due to the strong and the real direct collaboration of the city, the school, Community Ed and Rec, the Chamber of Commerce, and Convention and Visitors Bureau, we now have a true community calendar. It's in place to be used by both visitors and residents of our area, and I know it will be a model for other districts and communities and counties in the future. Its use continues to grow. We've also been involved in leadership roles in several community grants, including the statewide health improvement program, and our youth and our adults have benefited from the healthy lifestyles that this has enhanced in a variety of ways. We also have been involved with the community broadband, Blanden Community Broadband Grants, and tonight there was a media or a coding class going on, compliments of one of the grants that was written for app camps and coding camps. And it was very much an active place to learn more about technology. Also visited with a few people who took in some of the Coffee Connections, lessons in technology for the public that have been sponsored through this grant at various locations throughout our county. There was one at Maplewood today. There was one at Hy-Vee. There's been one at Trumont and Truman, variety of different places, and people can bring their media, have a cup of coffee free at the location that's there, probably refreshments, and learn how to use it. We have some instructors contracted to be there as trainers, and they've done a great job. So it's been a fun program to see that happen. Technology is such a growing field, and we've got a lot of our retired adults taking advantages of these Coffee Connection types of programs, too. We've also been involved in Fairmont Early Childhood Initiative Coalition, Safe Rouse to School, Healthy Youth, Youth First, Fairmont Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, and the Area Career Exploration Committee. One of the things that we were involved with this summer was the Early Childhood Initiative's direction to have Fairmont named as Minnesota's first bookend community by the Reach Out and Read, and this was largely due to efforts from our ECI volunteers and our ECI home visitor to pull all of our clinics together that do well child checks, including the human services for our county. And they are all using reading, recommending reading as a diagnostic and as a thing for families to do as a prescription for healthy family lifestyles. So that was exciting. We have a lot of different services, and I will touch on these a little bit. The Adult Basic Ed Program, we have free classes for adults who want to improve math or literacy skills, who want to prepare for GED, or the new Minnesota State Diploma Program as well, which has just piloted last year. We have English learning classes. We have more distance learning opportunities. So people who can't come to the classes, which are limited in times, or they may not work with their work or family schedules, can be registered as an Adult Basic Ed participant, and we will hook them up with the appropriate adult learning, distance learning resource, and they can study at home and come to our classes with just questions and work on this. So that's been an exciting thing. It's nice to see that we can broaden the opportunities out there for a lot of the public. We also provide classes at the Law Enforcement Center, two afternoons a week, and the Workforce Center one morning a week through our Adult Basic Ed Program. So you may not see these happening, but we are out there doing part of that, too. Adult enrichment, you'll see our catalog that changes every season, and today we had a beginning and conversational Spanish class in our classroom this morning, and there's another one tonight. There's a surgery class tonight, a variety of different things that you can learn. There's always something new to learn, and that's the fun about being with it. We hosted, the school hosted the PCs for computers, or for people giveaway through the Blanden Grant, too, and that was a really exciting night for the persons who were awarded the computers. We have adult recreation. We have coed, sand volleyball in the summer, and work with softball leagues in the summer. We have indoor volleyball and basketball, and thanks to the school for allowing the usage of their facilities for these kinds of programs for adults, and to the city for the facilities that they have in the summer available. So a lot of cooperative kinds of things. Roller skating is a new thing that we've added, and we've had some family roller skating nights. We had roller skating with our Fab Friday for grades three through six one night, plus all in the curriculum. So that was a neat new thing to add to our community's fun way to have leisure and to learn, too. We have our youth after-school enrichment program, Lights On for Kids. We expanded to grades two through six on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday nights, and they were cooking quesadillas tonight as I left. It runs from 3:00 to 5:00 after school, and that's a fun program. We had, I believe there were 27 in that class tonight. So it's a popular after-school enrichment type of event. We also have a lot of instructional types of sports for youth during the summer, T-ball, girls softball, flag football. We have sport camps. We have basketball and some soccer gyms, different types of open gyms when we have gym time available to offer, so that our schools are well-used. And thank you to the school for allowing that, because they're open more hours than just 8:00 to 5:00. We work with a lot of family events. We just got an award from the Martin County Youth Foundation last night to sponsor our family winter snowshoe animal tracking event out at Cedar Park on February 6th, and that's been popular. We have snowshoes for rent for families for weekends, along with other types of recreational activities, too. So a lot of services that are available through Community Ed, and I hope that the public will take advantage of these. One of the bigger things that we've done is facility scheduling for the district this year, and we've always done the district facility scheduling, and we've done some of the city sports complexes. With the addition of the community calendar, it's gotten to be a lot more work. Chris Seifert in our office, my coworker, is a specialist in facility scheduling. She also does all the training for the community calendar requesters. So if you want to put something on this community calendar, you contact our office, and Chris will teach you how to use, how to become a requester and to put events on there. So people don't have to call us with the event or call the Chamber of Commerce. They can learn to put it on themselves, and you'll see more and more of this. We encourage that. Thank you again for each of you, for your support of Community Ed in this district and our community. It has indeed been a pleasure and a privilege to work in a district and a community that has been so supportive as this, and I hope to see you at the open house.
Well, thanks, Ronnie, for coming, but before you go, we need to thank you and congratulate you for all the work that you put in. You're just a tireless advocate for CER, and when people are bored, they just click on that community calendar, there's always something going on to do in CER, lots of activities through that for kids, for adults, for everyone. So we just appreciate all the work that you and Chris do to keep that program running and running smoothly and being such champions for our community. We just appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you go again, Ronnie, quick question. Do you get ideas from the community for new learning offerings?
Oh, yes, and we love new ideas.
And so what's the best way if someone has an idea?
Give us a call at Community Ed or come in and talk to us. We've got, let's see, welding for women, hobbyists, is one of the new classes that we're trying to get started, and it may get started a little later this winter. Somebody talked about having gaga pits over soccer. Maybe we'll have to have a class on that, because that's a new sport that's becoming popular. We're always looking for new ideas, and we love having people share their talents with the community by coming in and teaching something that they enjoy doing. They don't have to be a teacher.
That was my next question. You know, if you have a new offering, how do you identify the instructors to facilitate that?
We're always open to new instructors and new ideas. We encourage people to, "I've been thinking about this, but I don't know if I could do it or not. Come in and talk to us." We're, we, those are some of our best teachers that have said that. I couldn't do it, but we knew they had the talent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is American Education Week proclamation, and Joyce Forster is here this evening to share that with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here. American Education Week is November 16th through the 20th. This is a week in which we, as educators, highlight the importance of a public school education. In the United States, public education truly is the great equalizer. With our educational system, all children have a chance to reach their dreams. It does not matter how rich a child or a family may or may not be. If a child is willing to work hard and do their best, he or she can be anything they would like to be. Many of our presidents grew up poor, but what made the difference was their chance to attend school and become educated. With that, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas American Education Week is an opportunity to recognize the accomplishments and the needs of our local public schools, and whereas our public schools have enabled generations of American families to build upon the lessons of the past to achieve the dreams of tomorrow, and whereas American system of a public education relies not only on the skills and dedication of teachers, school administrators, and educational support staff, but also on the encouragement and support of the entire community, and whereas teachers in the Fairmont area are joining teachers, students, and educational organizations around the nation in special activities in honor of American Education Week. Now therefore, Fairmont area schools are asking parents, teachers are asking parents, students, and civic leaders to join in the nation's annual salute to public education during the week of November 16th through the 20th, 2015, and do hereby proclaim this week to be American Education Week. Now to celebrate this week, the teachers will be doing many, many activities, and here's just a sampling of them. We will be placing ads and articles and letters to the editor in our local newspapers. We'll be making bookmarks, advertising public education to be dispersed at the local grocery stores. We'll be conducting a food drive by the educational staff that week to partake in. We'll be making flyers and signs to highlight the importance of American public schools. We'll be having guest readers in some of our classrooms sharing the joy of reading to our students. We'll be having junior achievement teachers from the community in our classrooms during that week, aiding our students in learning about our community, state, and nation in regards to business. We'll be showing appreciation to our school volunteers as well as our school personnel. The students in the elementary school will be tending an educational program brought to us by our Opera House, and that's another wonderful thing for us being outstate Minnesota. We can bring in this high-quality entertainment so that our students can have a chance to really see some professional entertainment, such as what we are going to be seeing. We'll be thanking the veterans for helping our country to stay free so we can all attend school and get a good education. The high school students in the musical Mary Poppins will be performing for our elementary school, as well as the public showcasing our fine arts department, and we'll be writing paragraphs for the Sentinel about what education means to each student. And then lastly, on behalf of Education Minnesota Fairmont, I want to take this opportunity to thank the school board, the parents of our students, and the community of Fairmont for always being so supportive of our schools. It really makes our teachers proud to work in such a community in which education is held in such high esteem. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Lots of activities going on, so how do you, like, how do you come up with all those ideas? Wow.
We work with our Education Minnesota Fairmont Teachers Association, and we brainstorm, and we have subcommittees, and the high school take on a few, and then the elementary take on a few, and it all comes together.
So everybody kind of has something that's age-appropriate so that they understand it, too.
Exactly.
Very cool. Very good, very cool. Any other questions for Joyce? Well, thank you for bringing that, and we appreciate it, and everyone in the community should be looking for American Education Week things all over, grocery stores and flyers and in the paper and on the radio and everywhere, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, do you want to do that one on your report?
I'll do it.
Okay, so then we'll move to the Superintendent's Report and Calendar. Superintendent Brown?
Thank you, Diane. First of all, the school board calendar, just a reminder again that Thursday, November 9th, at 12:00 noon is the Community Ed Advisory Council and the CER office at the elementary school. And on Tuesday, November 17th, the school board will be meeting with our pre-K through two staff at the William Budd Room. That's at 3:15 in the afternoon on Tuesday, November 17th. On Thursday, November 19th, we have an operations committee meeting, and that is to really look at the revised budget for the 1516, the current school year. And just a reminder, too, that the musical is taking place this week, and on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the musical Mary Poppins will start at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. And I did take three of the student actors to Rotary Club on Monday, and they performed some of the songs, and some of, they talked about the musical, and talked about their practices and their rehearsals, and there's 125 or 130 people totally involved in the musical or in the pit crew, and the pit orchestra is quite large as compared to previous years. And so that should be a really fun musical to go see over the next three nights. An update on the greenhouse, I went out and took a look at the greenhouse today. The greenhouse is about 90% constructed, and they're actually in the process now of installing the electricity and the natural gas and the water lines out to the greenhouse, but they should be done with that greenhouse construction within the next few days. And if you've gone by the, driven by the southeast corner of the high school, the greenhouse is, it's larger than we thought it was going to be. It's 12 feet tall and then the peak, and that's what we ordered, but it turns out to be a...
You didn't know how big 12 feet was? That's pretty tall.
It's pretty tall, and once it got up there, it looked like, it looks like an airplane hangar to me, but we...
How else would Jack and the Beanstalk fit?
That's exactly what I thought. I did think about that, so. And then Amber Seibert, our ag instructor, met with Sue Nelson and myself today to talk about her curriculum supply budget, as she implements a new course for the spring. She's going to be having a plant course, and so the students will be aggressively going after starter plants and flowers, and it should be a fun implementation of the greenhouse, so we're looking forward to that. And then an enrollment report, hot off the press, we're serving 1,701 students today, down a little bit at the elementary and down a little bit at the high school, but we're still serving 1,701 students. We still have students leaving and still have students coming into the school. We picked up a couple of students today in the high school that are not on this list, but still pretty strong for this time of year at 1,701 students. And then I do have a proclamation that I'll read. This is a proclamation to support the National Education Support Professionals, otherwise known as paraprofessionals. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, civility, and equality, and whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process, and whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students, and whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Now therefore, I, Randy J. Querring, Mayor of the City of Fairmont, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 18th, 2015, as National Education Support Professionals Day in the City of Fairmont, and he urges that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools.
All right. Any questions for Superintendent Brown? Thank you for your report. All right, next we'll move to financial business, and Sue Nelson, our business manager, is here to go through that with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the November 2015 Treasurers Report, wire transfers from October 23rd through November 6th, and the payment of the November 10th bills. So beginning with the wire transfers from October 23rd to November 6th, we have quite a few during that period of time, and that's because our payroll fits during that period of time. So the second one down is our net payroll, and then the next couple are associated with the payroll, different taxes, state and federal taxes, those types of things. Then the next two, I wired some money into that new account that we had talked about, our internal cash sweep account, so I brought some additional dollars in from the liquid asset fund. The next couple again are for payroll things, and then we have our P-card payment of $48,000, and we'll look at those details here in a bit. And then on the bottom, we have our payroll dispersments for October of $1,010,427. And then either on the flip side or attached, you have, although that says September, that should say October, the 2015 Treasurers Report. So that's all of our different funds and the cash balance, and that ICS internal cash sweep is included in the general fund cash account. Any questions? Then I'll go to the register that stated November 3rd, this is for our P-card. Just have a couple to bring to your attention there. We have a payment to EMC Insurance Companies for $38,783. This is our quarterly payment to our insurance company. This is for property casualty and work comp insurance. And then there's a payment to the National Counsel of Teachers of English, and this is being paid for with Title III dollars, and we are in a consortium with, for our Title III, and we are the financial agent for that or fiscal agent for that. So we are sending a couple of people to a conference, and one is from our school district and one is from another school district. Do you have any questions on the P-card register? Do you have any questions on the P-card register? Okay, then we can move to the register data today, November tenth. Have a few to bring to your attention. Check number fifty-seven, seven twenty-eight, made out to Big Island Rendezvous. This is for a sixth-grade field trip that was, that the students attended on October second and using Student Activity Dollars. Two down from that, Center Creek Orchard, our kindergarten students went there on October fourteenth. And check number fifty-seven, seven fifty-two, made out to the Minnesota DNR. This is a check that, a payment that we make annually, and it's based off of the water usage of the new well. The well was installed in two thousand and thirteen, so we've had, we've made this payment a couple of different times. This year during calendar year two thousand and fifteen, we used, or pumped maybe, one million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons. In two thousand and fourteen, that was one million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand gallons. The total cost of the well was a little over forty-six thousand, and it looks that it will probably take us about five and three-four years to recover the cost based on our usage in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. And then check number fifty-seven, seven seventy-six, made out to Youth Frontiers. This is for the eighth-grade Courage Retreat that was held on October seventh using Student Activity Dollars. Do you have any questions on that register or any of the reports? Julie and I did meet prior to the board meeting to review things.
If there are no questions, I would make a motion to approve the October two thousand and fifteen Treasurers Report, wire transfers for October twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, through November sixth, two thousand and fifteen, and payment of the November tenth, two thousand and fifteen bills.
Thank you, Julie's our second.
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the October two thousand and fifteen Treasurers Report as presented. Any further discussion or questions for Sue or Julie on the reports? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue. Next on our agenda is all business, and we have nothing listed to attend to, so we'll move to new business, and we have a World's Best Workforce Report from Superintendent Brown.
Well, thank you, Diane. The World's Best Workforce is new legislation that was passed a couple of years ago, and it takes effect, it took effect for the last school year, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year. And as part of that legislation, it requires school districts to do two things. Number one, to annually set five SMART goals around five pillars, and a SMART goal is defined as a goal that is specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. And the five pillars that the state legislature wants all school districts to look at, number one, to make sure that all children are ready for kindergarten; number two, to ensure that all children can read at the end of the third grade; three, the third pillar is to reduce the achievement gap among the different subgroups, the demographic subgroups of children we have in our schools; fourth is to have all children graduate high school; and the fifth goal is to have all students career and college ready. In fact, we had a meeting this afternoon at the high school, and there's another piece of legislation that was passed that requires, and this takes effect for this year's juniors, that when we sign their diplomas and have signed their transcript, that the school district must legally certify that they are career and college ready. And that will take effect for the graduating class of two thousand and seventeen. So that was the legislation that required all school districts to create a World's Best Workforce Plan, which we did last year for the first time. And then the second piece of the legislation, it requires all districts to respond and actually create a summary report on how we met those goals and exactly how we achieved, what we achieved. And so by looking through this report, this is a summary report, and the summary report's relatively short because the template that the Minnesota Department of Education provides us limits us to two hundred words in each subsection, and so they really do require you to be short. And so if you look on page two, our first goal was to have all students, all kindergarten students, actually, our goal was to have seventy-five percent of our kindergarten students show mastery in eighty percent or more of the skills listed in our kindergarten readiness checklist. And the final result, when we did measure our students, seventy-five percent of our students did meet that goal. And our goal for next year, we're going to increase that by five percent so that eighty percent of our students will meet eighty percent of the kindergarten readiness skills. So we did pretty good on that first one. The second one is one that is really kind of an important one to look at from a system standpoint, in that looking at all students at the end of third grade being able to be proficient on the MCA test. And we look back, and we had significant growth. We had a group of second graders coming into third grade last year that when they were tested on the NWA test, thirty-five point two percent of the second grade class of two thousand and thirteen met or exceeded the NWEA proficiency predictor in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. Our goal was to increase that by at least five percent, and that group actually showed a significant increase of thirteen point eight percent. And so at the end of last school year, forty-nine percent of the third grade class scored proficient on the MCA three reading test. And we are going to continue to increase that in future years. In closing the achievement gap among all groups, and demographically, the state of Minnesota looks at all students, white students, those students that qualify for free reduced lunch, students that are Hispanic, not white, students that are special education, and students that are English-language learners, and also, and those are the, those are the things that we could score because of the number of children each of those. And our goal is to increase each of those percentages by five percent. And all of our students showed that on the reading test, sixty-three point one percent of all students in our school scored proficient on the reading test. Our hope was to bring that up five percent. The result was that we ended up with sixty-two point three percent. Our white population last year was sixty-five point one percent. Coming into last year, at the end of last year, was sixty-four point two percent. Our free reduced lunch a year ago was fifty-two point nine percent. Last year, it was fifty point three percent. Our Hispanic population showed a growth of thirty-nine point three percent, up to forty-five point three percent. Our special education was at thirty-three point seven percent, it went down to twenty-five point eight percent. And our ELL population, English-language learners, scored originally at twenty-four point two percent, and they increased up to thirty-eight point five. So this, the achievement gap, closing the achievement gap among our, the different demographic groups of our district needs to be a really big focus of our next year. In terms of having all students career and college ready by graduation, what we did, we looked at that. Our goal is to have ninety percent of our students meet that goal. And last year, we had a hundred and nine students graduate from Fairmont High School, and ninety percent of those students did go onto college or directly into the workforce. And when you divide that out, eighty percent of the students actually went to college, went to either a two-year college or a four-year college. Ten percent of our students were undecided. Ten percent of our students went directly into the workforce, actually, nine percent went directly into the workforce, and one percent or one student went into the military. We had a female that joined the Air Force last year.
So is college also like a vocational school too?
Yes, yes.
So two-year or vocational or?
Right. And we actually have statistics on that too. We could break that down some more to show who went to a vocational school versus a traditional four-year college. And then in terms of all students graduate, in the previous year, two thousand and fourteen, eighty-nine point three percent of our students graduated from Fairmont High School. In two thousand and fifteen, it was eighty-nine point two six percent. And our goal is ninety percent, that's a statewide goal, so we're pretty close to meeting the statewide goal. In all honesty, I'm not happy that we're not at a hundred percent. I think a hundred percent of our students that come into ninth grade should finish high school. You might be interested, statewide, eighty-two percent of our students that attend public schools in Minnesota graduate from high school. Eighty-two percent statewide, we're at eighty-nine point two six. And as you look at how we disaggregated that, ninety-three point three percent of our white children graduate, fifty-four point five percent of our Hispanic children graduate, a hundred percent of our black students graduate, we only had one African-American student last year in the high school senior class when he graduated, and ELL population, fifty percent of those children graduate, special ed is eighty-five point seven one. Our free reduced lunch population, eighty percent of our children on free reduced lunch graduated. And so, you know, we're pretty much where the statewide average, or statewide goal is, but once again, my hope is that we increase that so we get to a hundred percent.
Quick question, Joe.
Yes.
With the graduation, you know, when students come in and going, how does that, how does that number capture that?
That's a great question, and that's a, here's the way the state measures that. When a student enters your system in ninth grade, they're considered yours. And the only way that they would not be considered yours is if you can document that they actually transferred to another school. And I will tell you, the, one of the things that we've asked our administrative support staff to do at the high school, we started this last year, and at the elementary, that when students come and go into the system, I want them to document, why are they coming here, where are they coming from, why did they come to this region, are they open enrolling or did the family move, and if the family moved, why did they move? And vice versa, if the student leaves our system, why did the student leave the system? Did they open and roll out, or did they move to Texas, or did mom and dad get a divorce and they moved to the other family? And so we're getting some really good, specific, detailed data. Now, the beauty of that is by tracking these students to find out what exactly happened to them if they left our school, is if they enrolled in another school system, then they're now that school's responsibility. Now, we do get students that come in, in fact, we just got one the other day, I think it was nineteen years old, just came and joined our high school and is behind in credits, but, and so that student will not graduate obviously in four years because they're already behind. But the state does allow you to track students up to six years. And remember that a student in Minnesota can stay in school till they're twenty-one. And if they're twenty-one during the last year that they're in school, they can continue in school until the end of the school year. And I know that we do have a student that came back this year, that's nineteen years old, and has shorter credits, should have graduated last year, but he's on track to graduate this year. So it's kind of a complicated thing, but because we do have kids going in and out. Last year, we had two hundred students enter our school system at, after the end, after the start of the school year, and we had two hundred students leave our school system after the start of the school year. So it's very important that schools keep track of who's coming and going and where. Now, if you lose track of that student, they're considered a dropout. And we do have students that the parents just up and leave without any notification. They don't ask for transcripts, and they don't ask for their records to be forwarded to another school, and then that person is considered a drop. And so when I look at ten percent of our students not graduated from high school, I do know this, I will tell you, the high school is doing a marvelous job. Mrs. Ness and Mr. Tredo and the counseling department, they have a tracking system now set up for every student in grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. And it's a Google document that they have that's updated by different teachers, so whenever there is a student that looks like they're not doing well, they're highlighted, and all teachers have access to that report. And so they're doing a really good job of tracking these students. It's a long answer, but it's a really complicated question. It is.
Thanks.
Okay.
We're going to make a few editorial tweaks to this, but I'm going to ask the school board tonight to approve this as is, and then it has to be sent to the state by December first.
One last question. You know, the eighty percent going to college, you know, seems really good. That's, that's going directly from high school. Do we have any way of measuring how many continue on, finish college?
You know, we don't, and thanks for asking that question. We are looking at contracting with a service that will actually survey our senior students during the last month of their senior year. Eighteen months after they graduate, they will survey these students again, and then five years after they graduate, they'll survey them again. And the school district will get a very comprehensive report on exactly what happened to our students. We know, for example, right now, that there are students that went off to college and have already come home. And we know there are students that said they were going here, but they actually have now transferred and gone over here. We need to do a more comprehensive job of tracking what happens to our students once they leave our system. And one of the report I'll mention to you, we are getting a report now from the Minnesota Department of Education, that when our students go to a public school in Minnesota, if they are required to take a remedial class, we get a report on that, on how many of our students went to Mankato State or the University of Minnesota, and how many students had to take a remedial class, either in math or in reading or in science. And we get notified of that, and we actually get a list of who the students are, what classes they took, and how many they had to take. And that was a report that started last year. I do believe, I'm reading tea leaves right now, but I believe what's going to happen in the future. It might be four or five years down the road, but I do think that high schools, I think there's legislative support for high schools to be charged back for students that graduate and have to take a remedial class. That's why I think it's so important that we take a really good look at our graduation standards, and then we, when we put on that transcript that the student is career and college ready, that they're truly career and college ready, not just that they graduated and earned forty-five credits. And so it's going to get more intense, I think, in terms of what that high school diploma means in the future.
Any other questions on the World's Best Workforce Report?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the World's Best Workforce for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, as presented and with edits made by Joe.
Okay, thank you, Nicole's our second.
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the World's Best Workforce Summary for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year.
Can I just add one thing, Diane? Last night, we did review this report in front of the Staff Development Curriculum Committee, and they voted unanimously to approve the report.
In Appendix A.
Excuse me.
So any additional questions or comments? There will be just a couple of edits, just to clean the language up so that it looks better. And then it needs to go to the State Department by December first, so we need to take action on that. And as long as it's been approved by SDCC, I think that it's wise for the board to do so. So we have a motion. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Then we have a personnel item to talk about, employment's, Rufus?
The athletic director has recommended the list of coaches to be hired for the years, winter sports. I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment of the roster of coaches that have come forward.
Okay, there's a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Dan. So I have a motion by Rufus, a second by Dan, to approve the employment of the winter athletic coaches for the fifteen, sixteen school year, and it's in Appendix B in your packet. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we're down to board and committee reports and SDCC at a meeting.
SDCC met yesterday afternoon from three forty-five to five, and the first item of business was the World's Best Workforce that Joe presented, and we looked through that, and there was only one real note on page five where it says the district hired a full-time ELL teacher, really a district, we already had that, that position, so we changed the wording to the district employs a full-time ELL teacher for the elementary school. And that, Joe did a very good job of presenting that and summing up what the SDCC committee needed to know for that. We also looked at the structure of Q-COMP and PLCs. There's leadership, there's a lot of the Q-COMP leaders and PLC leaders that their terms are coming due at the end of this year, and the question is, will they be reapplying or hoping to continue those positions? And if not, how will we fill those positions and what the structure might, might change? And so they're going to ask the staff what they envision this possibly looking like next year going forward and bring that back to SDCC. We also looked at the state looked at, the state is, has a new requirement for ELL, which is, which are English language learners, for teachers to be relicensed by the state. And we discussed how that might be implemented to meet these new state requirements. And we also had Kim Ness present her 7 through 12 administrators curriculum plan that she's working on. And then, because there was a lot of discussion throughout the meeting, we adjourned, and next time we will cover EIP achievement goals and initiatives, and the VAGO in-service survey summary.
Busy meeting, wasn't it?
It was a busy meeting.
Any questions for Nicole on SDCC? Well, following our adjournment here, we will have the, a board work session at the 3-6 cafeteria at the elementary school. And we're going to finish up the World's Best Workforce Summary, if there's anything additional with that. And then we also did a school board self-evaluation, which we will talk about and see what we need to discuss on that. Anything else that needs to come before the board?
I just have one note of information for you regarding sports. For our gymnastics, we've co-opted with Martin County West for the last few years. Just to let you know, we do have a student from Grenada Huntley East Chain who is going to be participating as well. So, we signed, we did all the paperwork, and now they are a part of the Martin County Magic Co-op for gymnastics as well. So, it's ready to go. They're practicing already, so.
Thanks Dan. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you Dan. Zer second?
I'll second.
Thank you Nicole. I have a motion by Dan, a second by Nicole, to approve adjourned the school board meeting at 5:51 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you everyone.